I'd like to call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledges.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to begin this evening with a very special presentation to Mr. Armaji Bhutar. Mrs. Janowski is here from the state legislator and we want to thank him for his many years of service to the town of Vernon, especially the Board of Ed. So, Mrs. Janowski.
(Inaudible).
First of all, we just want to thank you so much for your many, many years on the board. We've missed you in the last year and we want to wish you good luck in the future and thank you for all your contributions to the town of Vernon and the students of Vernon.
Yeah, me too.
And, you know, everybody gets these when they leave, right? And here's a special gift from the board for you. Okay? Mrs. Janowski?
Thank you. I first want to thank the Board of Education members for doing what you do in acknowledging volunteers, former members, and others who volunteer within the school system. And I know what it's like. Your job is not easy, especially since all of you here are involved in the political type of parliament, so it's not an easy task and I commend you all for doing what you do because it is volunteering. You don't get paid for this, but you get the bruises from it. So, again, I congratulate you all for doing what you do. And I do, would like to, and I appreciate having the opportunity to honor one of your own, Armaji Bhutar. I've known Armaji for many, many years and I know how passionate he is about education and the children of this community, so I think it's very fitting that we honor him with a General Assembly official citation from myself, Representative Tim Ackert, and Senator Tony Guglielmo, be adhered by Noah Toal, that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Armaji Bhutar in recognition of your 16 years of dedicated public service to the town of Vernon as a member and past chairman of the Vernon Board of Education from 1995 to 2009 and again from 2011 to 2014. You have served on every committee, including budget steering, communications, contract negotiations, policy review, facilities and personnel grievances, and much, much more. Your volunteerism and immense contribution to the benefit of our town's children as well as our town are greatly appreciated. Thank you for your hard work and best wishes on your continued success. And it is signed, the entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. And it is signed by the President of PROTEP, Martin Mooney, Speaker of the House, Brendan Sharkey, and Secretary of State Denise Mira.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Armaji.
Thank you. (Applause). And to one and all, Dr. Conway, Ann Fisher, Dean Hool, and the rest of the board members. And he just told me that his daughter is going to go to college in Plymouth State this coming fall. I have a record deal which was auditioned by a former professor of history of Dartmouth College and it is titled, "Wit, Wisdom, and Humor of a Mart." I tell you, this is hardly in difficult except a critical river and it's a beautiful record. If you ever get the chance to get it, it's amazing. It was auditioned by Professor Foley from Dartmouth and that's my proud collection and possession since I lived in New Hampshire before I relocated to Connecticut. And other than that, I just want to say a few words. Little did I know, when I moved to Vernon in 1977, that I will be getting an award in public service in the town. Although, by tradition, I have been a public servant even before I moved to Connecticut. And, you see, it's critical, it's important that we all do it, and we do it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. (Applause). All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. (Applause). All right, well, thank you very much. And we will move on to item 1.2, which is the 2015 Silver National Healthy Schools Award to Skinner Road School.
Thank you. And Mrs. Simon is here this evening. We wanted to just do a quick ceremony. We do have a certificate for you, Mrs. Simon. Thank you for coming. The, excuse me. Our district has been involved with the Alliance for a Healthier Generation program for four years now. It is a combination of, or cooperation between the American Heart Association, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, and the Bill Clinton Foundation. And this is all, and it also is Mrs. Obama's, I've forgotten the latest, healthier schools.
Let's Move Active Schools.
Let's Move, yes. Let's Move Active Schools. And so Skinner Road School, three years ago, began looking at their practices, changed their practices a little bit. And last year, they submitted an application at this time and they received the Bronze Award, National Award. They were the only board leaders in the state of Connecticut. No other school in the state of Connecticut received that. This year, they submitted for the Silver Award. We are delighted to announce that, we have just received the announcement that they have received the Silver Award. They are the second school in the state of Connecticut to have received that award. And I believe the only school receiving any award this year. I think Mr. Youthgonon is going to go and receive that award late summer, early fall. So, I would like to introduce Mrs. Simon to receive her certificate on behalf of the board and Mrs. Fisher.
Well, one second. Goodbye, my fellow Americans. All the best to you in your future endeavors. And I must say that my children are lucky and blessed that they went to school over here. They were both white country students, but never did they ever go through what the students in present school districts are going through, duhruing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And they never came home. They had A was bothering me, B was bothering me, C was bothering them. They lived and enjoyed this experience in high school education here and I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart and core of my bone that I wish that should be the experience of anyone and everyone coming to the school district for education. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Dr. Conway. Hey, Dean, thanks again. Laura Bush, Ann, Michelle, you were the first one that started working on the board with you. But that went back a long time. I don't want to take your time. You have probably a heavy agenda, as usual. So, thanks very much again, one and all. Bye.
Thank you, Mrs. Simon, for coming. This is so exciting. Can you tell us what Skinner Road had to do to win the Silver Awards?
We had to, there was, I think, eight categories that we had to comply with national standards for. I have to say, Chris was a huge proponent in helping us to get the awards because all of the cafeteria criteria, he dealt with and made sure that we were right on top of. There was one point where we have to go in and check every snack that we serve and we'll put it through a calculator and discovered that one of the products that we were serving was actually not the product that we originally ordered and he immediately pulled it from our snack options for the kids. So, I wasn't real popular when Doritos went away because they were no longer the low-fat Doritos, but we really have complied with that. We also needed to add the five minutes into gym, which was at the beginning of the year, one of the things that was stopping us from moving from bronze to silver. And I talked with Dr. Conway and she supported us in doing that. We want to go for gold next year and I have to say, the district has been wonderful. We've worked with Jerry Werman from the Alliance. She's supported everything we do. When we come up with our ideas and run them by the mayor and the district, there's always support for that. So, not sure how we're going to make the 300 minutes in two weeks to get gold, but we're really going to work on it because I think that Skinner Road, under the guidance and support of Judy Manfree, really has changed to doing very healthy behaviors. We do our walk to school every two weeks and we want to continue that and move students forward in their health and making healthy options and choices. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. (Applause).
Now, we'll move on to item 1.3, Chronic Absentee Intruency Report. While Mr. Billyak and Mr. Ramos approach the microphones and the computer, I'd like to indicate that we are most fortunate to have the services of both Mr. Ramos, who was a collaborator and a partner from the Youth Service Bureau and works with our families pre-K through grade five, and Mr. Billyak, who is our residency person, as well as our truancy officer. And I, I'm not going to talk too much tonight. I just finished one. I just finished a cocktail. But they have their year-end report. They were waiting to get all the data last Wednesday and so they will share it to you. I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Being my, our last presentation in front of Dr. Conway, I just want to give a special thanks to you, Dr. Conway, for all your leadership and support around attendance and the initiatives that we've been doing over the last five years. I attended a state BOE chronic absenteeism meeting last week and Vernon is really on the forefront in this area. We're featured regularly at the state Capitol on our best practices and really the highlight is having the superintendent at the forefront of that, getting everybody's buy-in, all the schools' buy-in, and having a good systematic policy to go by. So, thank you for all your support. I couldn't have done this without your support, so I appreciate that. Leading into that, we've been following a group called Attendance Works for about five years now and they're a leader, they're the leader on chronic absenteeism. And we've been, you know, using their best practices and following their, some of their ideas from Hetty Chang, who's the director of that organization. So, she's regularly brought to Connecticut and that's where a lot of our policies are formulated, state policies are formulated from some of her ideas and best practices in that area. There's still new attendance laws. It's still a great buzz in the state of Connecticut. Attendance is very on a top priority for the Board of Education. New laws are being passed every year. The newest one is schools that have a certain amount of chronic absenteeism have to come up with attendance, like intervention groups to monitor that. And we've always been a step ahead of everybody else, right, Dr. Conway? And we already have that in all of our schools. So, we've been staying right on top of the attendance laws and I think some of the data will actually prove that, since now we can show data over four years of time. With that, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Ramos, just to talk about some of the things we do at the school level as far as monitoring goes.
Hello, everybody. Dr. Conway, goodbye. Anyways, yes, we, you know, we collaborate very well. The Youth Services collaborate very well with the Vernon Board of Ed in providing all sorts of different things. My main focus is the attendance piece. We have a caseload of children who've been identified as having attendance concerns. You know, we meet weekly at each school where those children get identified and then we put a plan in place to see if we can figure out what's the best way to reach these families. The unique thing about me is that I'm also in the community. I'm a year-round employee. So, not only do I see these children during the school year, I see them, you know, during the summer also. Matter of fact, today we had our free lunch program and a bunch of them came down and, you know, to just hang out, if you want to put it that way. Again, you know, I just feel like I'm more of a liaison for these families. I help them navigate through the school system, especially some of the Spanish-speaking families. And, you know, like things, for example, if we notice that the families need any kind of support outside when it comes to registering their children to sports or getting access to, you know, just information, like for example, the, you know, the bookmobile which starts running tomorrow, you know, I feel like that's my position. Within the schools, you know, we track the attendance regularly. I look at pretty much the attendance every day and if there's a child or a student who's on my radar, normally there's contact at home, just trying to figure out what's going on. I mean, but that's the bulk of what I do at the elementary level and we do monitor the preschool. So, I am in contact with the advocates at the preschool level and just try to be a support to them. I mean, they have their own protocols and procedures and things that they follow, but I always try to make myself available to assist them if it's a home visit or if it's communicating with the parent of those type things.
The tiered attendance intervention pyramid, we've been following this now for the past four years since the state passed the attendance laws and when Dr. Conway convened all the schools to get together to come up with a new, or I should say revised attendance policy for our district. And so, we've been following this model now for, like I said, four years. And we're still, it's systematic. We send out letters at certain times when they hit certain absences, when the children hit certain absences, followed by phone calls and then mandatory parent meetings when they hit nine absences, which is halfway to chronic absenteeism. One of the highlights, though, is what we have in the schools. We have meetings with our administration, our support staff, weekly to monitor kids that are chronically absent and/or truant. So, no one's falling through the cracks. Everybody's been identified. We all know everybody has different issues, so as far as what we do is different with every child and family. And, you know, some family could take an hour for intervention, some of it could take days or weeks. So, it's a very time-consuming process, but it's well worth it and hopefully our stats will show that. I think going to the top of the pyramid with the Foysons, family with service needs, DCF referrals, they have been down at least at the middle and high school, which is a good sign, which means our interventions are working. We're getting the families to come in, we're finding out what the root problems are with the attendance issue and addressing that. Any questions on our model? It's really been effective, I think, over the last four years. Ann, Ozzy went over, go ahead.
Michelle has a question.
Oh, yes.
Real quick.
Yes, absolutely.
Hi, Bill. Hi, Oz. Can you give me an example of an attendance incentive?
I mean, I know at the elementary level, what I try to do is figure out what makes that individual child tick. It could be something as simple as, you know, asking the art teacher when her room is available in, let's say, doing a special art project. Or it could be, you know, we have one of, one of, one of the students I've been active with the last couple of years, he happens to be one of the best baseball players for, at the time it was Rockville Little League, now they joined. So, on Fridays, you know, I go in there and throw a ball around with them. You know what I mean? So, we really try to figure out, you know, ways, you know, creative ways to get the child involved in school and, you know, and hey, if you meet your goals for the week, then on Friday or Thursday, you know, we'll do something special. So, that's, that's one of the incentives that we use at the elementary level.
And at the middle school, we work on the premise of improved attendance, not exactly the best attendance, to give those kids the incentive. So, we have what's called the store cards, which are the principal values of ECMS. So, when a child, say, goes to school for two weeks in a row after he's already, or she has already missed a bunch of days at school, we'll give them store cards and they can buy things out of the school store. That's just one incentive that we use at the middle school.
We also use modeling. We'll sometimes try to identify a strong student within that child's classroom as a support for that child. And I, Mrs. Simon, Ms. Simons is here. She'll tell you, most of the time I see children is, I try to do it during lunch and they can, but, you know, I normally have a model student who gets to bring a friend and then the child who's on the caseload gets to bring a friend. And it's just a way for them to identify positive people within their school to surround themselves with. I mean, that, to me, that's been very valuable, is not only spending time with the child who's having issues attendance-wise, but also bringing in a child who is successful as a way to, you know, model for that child what's expected of him in the classroom.
So, it's individual child incentives, not families? There's no incentive for the family to get your child?
I know, I know. We do a lot of gift baskets for families in need around, you know, around the holiday time. And we do identify specific families, even the ones with attendance issues, and we do go out to the homes to meet with the families. And not necessarily just to talk about attendance, just to get that buy-in from the family. You know, how are you doing? What you, what do you need instead of, you know, why doesn't your kid come to school? That's the next step.
And, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to take a ball every time, but, you know, when it comes to the family, you know, a lot of it is monetary. So, what I try to do is I try to figure out ways to help the family in areas that'll improve, let's say, what's going on with the child. One of the ways is we hook them up with the after-school programming, whether it's our program or someone else's program, we try to be the vessel to get them in that program. I can speak for my program. Part of what we do is we do have the parents attend field trips. You know, we take opportunities to include them in everything that we do, even decision-making when it comes to the holidays. We have a major holiday party that they come to and that's just a way to, you know, bridge that gap, let's say, from, you know, community to schools. One of my favorite events is that holiday party because a lot of the families that I can't connect with or the parents that I can't connect with, I use that as a, as a way to get them in the door. And then after New Year's or after, you know, Christmas, normally the dialogue is so much better because they kind of get what we do. So, but we try to be as available as possible with the families. It's not just the children, but we also want to try to build health, healthy, you know, we want the children to understand that at some point it's going to be on you. If your mom doesn't take it seriously, at some point it's going to be on you. And that's kind of the tool that we try to end everything with is, you know, at some point, you know, when you're in fifth or sixth grade, you're going to have to do it on your own, so.
Community partners, of course, are very important. I'm just sitting next to me, Oz Ramos from Vernon Services. We do home visits together. Him and I meet specially just before school gets out and he goes over the list of fifth grade students that have attendance issues. So, they're already identified even before they hit the middle school. I do the same thing with the high school. Identify all the chronically absent kids in eighth grade or truant kids in eighth grade and the guidance counselors, the school counselors have that list. And right away, that first week at school, we're meeting with the children and/or families if we have to. So, that's one of the community partners that we have. Also, we still bring in kids, save Connecticut, into the middle school and she comes in once or twice a week and she mentors kids that have attendance and behavioral issues. So, the community partner piece is huge. Our new SARB, or Student Attendance Review Board, at the high school has mental health providers, substance abuse providers. We have police on that, on that group, the nurses there. So, it's very, you know, our community is well involved in our school system, especially when it comes around with the attendance issues. Starting off with some statistics, these are statistics at Vernon Center Middle School. As you can see, this year, there was a little bit of a spike on chronic absenteeism. I like having this because I can analyze exactly why it went up a little bit and some of the reasons are, we include out-of-school suspensions, that is an absence, it's an excused absence, but it's part of that number that rises up to chronic absenteeism. And we also had a rash of hospitalization. So, the numbers are still 5% where we want to keep it or lower. So, you can see just over the chart, since the position started with 83, that was a year before it came on, and how it looks now. So, we're kind of, we're still at a really good level. And truancy actually went down seven from 13 from last year. So, we're very happy about those numbers. Unexcused absences, this is what leads to the truancy piece. As you can see, the high numbers prior to the position being created by the board and how they are now. Again, analyzing these numbers, as you see, they went up a little bit, but I could tell you, four students at VCMS totaled 140 of these. So, it all has, there's always a reason to the statistics here on rises and dips and highs, so. But still, they're very low. As you know, anything after nine absences, families have to get doctor notes and if they don't have those, those are unexcused. So, we monitor, we follow the state standards right to the T. This is a snapshot of all three of our schools. Ozzy, maybe start with page through five, statistics.
You know, we've, we've pretty much are, we've leveled off, which is a good thing because as you look at the bar graph, it's decreased over the last four or five years. This year, there was a 1% increase in, you know, the percentage. Ironically enough, last year, we had exactly 100, I believe it was, students who were, you know, 18 or more absences at all five elementary schools. So, in my head, I was like, we're not hitting that 100 this year. So, I, you know, that was one of my personal goals, was to keep it under 100. At the end of the year, when I ran the numbers, it was at 96. I was like, yeah! But I didn't count that we had less students. So, the percentage went up and I was like, oh! But anyways, we're doing a very good job. I could speak, you know, for the, you know, for the elementary level. It is a priority. It's something that's constantly being addressed.
And I talked about the middle school already. Moving on to the high school, you can see a rise in chronic absenteeism. I just want to point out, though, I did, I did an analysis on our DIRG, our District Reference Group, and there's 14 towns in it. When you compare Vernon to the other towns, last year Vernon had the least amount of chronic absenteeism out of all 14 schools. As far as the high school, we had, the high school had the second least amount out of the 14 schools. So, it looks dramatically high, but it's the common theme with the rest of our towns that have the same socioeconomic backgrounds. It's a tough nut to crack at the high school. We're doing a lot of incentives up there. What it doesn't show is all the kids that we did help. That's, that's what this doesn't show. All the kids that are still in school and the ones that, through interventions, are staying in school. So, I just wanted to point that out, that we are, when you compare us to the other schools, we're doing pretty good. Any questions on that graph? Again, that's a snapshot of VCMS. That's average daily attendance. State goal, just so you know, is 95%. Dr. Conway's goal is 96% and VCMS has been maintaining that over the last two years. That's, we're looking good there. And Ozzy, want to touch base on, this is our yearly end statistics? Maybe you want to talk about your grammar school first, you know?
Overall, you know, you always have the one or two or maybe the three schools that are really strong, who, you know, the daily, the average daily attendance looks great. I just want to point out, though, I did, I did an analysis on our DIRG, our District Reference Group, and there's 14 towns in it. When you compare Vernon to the other towns, last year Vernon had the least amount of chronic absenteeism out of all 14 schools. As far as the high school, we had, the high school had the second least amount out of the 14 schools. So it looks dramatically high, but it's the common theme with the rest of our towns that have the same socioeconomic backgrounds. It, it's, it's a tough nut to crack at the high school. We're doing a lot of incentives up there. What it doesn't show is all the kids that we did help. That's, that's what this doesn't show. All the kids that are still in school, and the ones that, through interventions, are staying in school. So I just wanted to point that out, that we are, when you compare us to the other schools, we're doing pretty good. Any questions on that graph? Again, that's a snapshot of VCMS, that's average daily attendance. State goal, just so you know, is 95%. Dr. Conway's goal is 96%, and VCMS has been maintaining that over the last two years. That's, we're looking good there. And Ozzy, want to touch base on, this is our yearly end statistics? Maybe you want to talk about your grammar school first, you know?
Overall, you know, you always have the one or two, or maybe the three schools that are really strong, who, you know, the daily, the average daily attendance looks great, you know? But when you pull out the, you know, the number of kids who have more than 18, you notice that each school has some, some students who are over 18. Honestly, I was pretty happy overall with the attendance of all five elementary schools this year, considering, you know, some of the issues that they were dealing with. I can't speak for statistics in the past, but I know that this year, we have a lot of children who are homeless, more than I can remember. Maybe, I don't know if I'm more aware of it this year than I've ever been. But when it comes to some of the mental health concerns within the schools, and, you know, considering all the things that we had this past year, I think the numbers were pretty good. Like I said, the administrators are awesome to work with, it is a priority to them, and the communication's great. So, I mean, even though we have a 1% increase from last year, you know, my heart feels good about it. I really feel like, you know, the buildings all did what they had to do to address the attendance this year.
And really, just to sum it up, our district has made the mark for state average daily attendance, we're 95.8, so we're above that. Four out of seven schools are over 96%, which is Dr. Conway's goal. And it's really only the high school that, that fell below the mark. And that is our presentation. I hope we didn't take up too much of your time. Is there any questions at all from the board?
Tony.
With the high school, could you give us an example of what would be the problem for the students?
I mean, I know one of the major issues for not just our school, but for a lot of schools, was the weather issue. It was brutal. And you can, you can actually see it right during the, you can see the whites, the whites are the ones that didn't make the mark. So weather definitely has a, there's a correlation with weather and attendance. The ninth graders, that transition year is the toughest year. And I've been even thinking, I've been brainstorming different things to do for next year. More attention needs to be placed on the ninth graders. Because truancy triples, chronic absenteeism triples. So we are, I am going to get with the administration, administration up there and maybe figure out some new ideas. Even though we have the Student Attendance Review Board up there, it doesn't cover all the kids, we can only grab a few of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clinton.
If the district doesn't meet the state requirement of 95%, is there any pushback from the state or penalties that they apply to a given district?
I don't, I don't think there's any, not that I know of. I know that by them looking at our statistics, though, we're one of the forefront leaders in combating chronic absenteeism and truancy. So our best practice is, other people are following now, we're used as examples throughout other districts. They're coming to us, asking questions, but I don't, I haven't heard of any penalties or repercussions from our statistics, though.
Thank you.
Sorry. It's obvious that you're making an impact, honestly, so thank you for that. And Ozzy said that the administrators are great and communication is great, it's working. Is there anything that we can do that we're not doing? Not, not you guys, but the, at the board level, is there something we could be doing to help?
I mean, it's, there's been so, you know, there's been so much improvement over the last four or five years, that there's a lot more good than bad. And I, off the top of my head, I can't give you something specific, and I don't know if this is the place for it. You know what I mean? It might be a conversation with someone else who is more aware of what goes on. When it comes to the attendance piece, though, I feel like we're really addressing, you know, everything that we need to do. I mean, when we sat down and revamped the policy, the attendance policy together, you know, we knew we'd get some pushbacks, you know, because some of our benchmarks for those, you know, letters are six, nine, you know, and, and sometimes a family goes on vacation. So you're going to get that letter. So we knew we were going to get some pushbacks, and at first, some of the, you know, some of the people in the buildings were resistant, but now, I think with the numbers and the way it opened up the line of communication, I mean, this is the best it's ever been. I mean, I feel like I know so many families and parents that I know more than I ever have. I think we're heading in the right direction. So to answer your question, I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
The only thing, the only thing I could think of is, again, the weather issue, I think would be a money issue. You know, some of our housing complexes, especially the walkers, the kids that walk to school, I might thought we maybe have a bus go to that community on bad weather days, break to the complex, and maybe have a robocall out the night before saying, hey, we're going to have an extra bus at whatever housing complex near the school. I mean, I've heard, I've seen that from other districts doing that, and that's, that's gotten a lot of kids, you know, to school that day. Because a lot of our families don't have transportation, so if the kid misses that bus, or it's bad weather, they're not getting to school.
You know, it all boils down to monetary, you know, I mean, I don't want to, you know, hard on that, but, you know, some of the elementary schools are shorthanded, I mean, when it comes to dealing with behaviors or dealing with attendance. I mean, so, you know, what I do, I was fortunate, I wasn't very active at Northeast School this year, so I was able to spread myself around four other schools, but the need is there. I mean, you know, it would be great to have another person like Bill or I, just to assist in the attendance portion of this, because it is a good job. You know, maybe one at every level, like, we have that transition route to the high school, it's a huge thing at the high school.
Mrs. Bush.
Not really a question, but I just want to commend you for the work you're doing in our community. Making those connections with the children and the families is crucial to building their trust and giving, making them feel that school is important. And if, if we don't have that, then it would, it wouldn't work. So we're seeing the results from your hard work and you out there making those connections. And I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, please? I want to echo what Laura said, you guys are doing a great job, and we thank you for all the time and effort that you put in. We know it's a challenge, so thank you.
That breaks summer?
Two point zero consent agenda, two point one.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Mrs. Bush, second. Does anybody want to pull that against Mr. Stansel?
I don't see it.
Anyone else? I'd just like to pull item, just a typo.
D, I think.
Okay, so, we will, we will vote on A and D. All those in favor of approving A or D through unanimous? B, the reason I just pulled B is on page seven, first line, it says, "Under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act," which would be a T there. Very first sentence? Very first sentence, "Under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act." Okay? That was all. And motion? Mr. Hall?
Motion to approve, two point one and B, as an idea.
Second, Mrs. Bush. Second. All those in favor? Mr. Stansel, thank you. Okay, Mr. Stansel, item C?
I'm on what is marked as page 15, which is at the top, page four of 11, item three. I got a question and then a, I think is a typo. My question is, we crossed out C entirely, which used to be the, you have to offer a healthy option, and we seem to have revised D. So is it that for these foods sold, that we're not allowing anything that doesn't meet those standards, or that we're not asking for the healthy option anymore, or what, what's the intent of that?
Maybe Chris could help me too, but I believe, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, the, we deleted C because it's not a district run function, so we can't control something that's not run by the district. But in item D, it is about district run, like PTOs and booster clubs, which are part of the district.
Oh, okay, so like, who'd stand at the football game?
Which is part of the school district.
Okay. And do they, are we still saying that we're allowing for that option, or that they're only allowed to offer those healthy food options that meet the?
No, they, they just have to offer at least one healthy food option with, if they're selling, I don't know, Voag as their cake auction, but they always have fruit baskets there too.
Right, right. Okay. In that case, thank you for the clarification. I guess my only comment would be, if we've totally eliminated C, then D should be changed to C.
Right, which will happen when we read, write it if this is approved.
Okay, that was it.
Originally, this policy did have red highlighted lettering, but since it was not printed in color, we don't have all the editions. Like, anything that was in red is an edition, but it's all things that we got from the state that we had to include. Is yours, oh, yours is? Okay, the paper copy wasn't in red, sorry. But, well, I had the copy already, but I, you know, so, all right, I guess we'll see. No other questions on that one? Okay, Mrs. Bush.
I move to approve Consent Agenda two point one, C.
Second, Mr. Stansel. All those in favor? Through unanimous, thank you very much. School Office Counsel, thanks you too. We'll move on to item three point zero, Secretary's Report. Opportunity for Board to add or delete agenda items. Does anyone, Mr. Hall?
Make a motion that we add item seven point two, A, a 2014-2015 amended, amendments and transfers.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Mrs. Russell. Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Anything else to add or delete from the agenda? Okay. Item three point two, Rockville High School Student Representative, they're on summer vacations, but they are not here. Item four point zero, Community Forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Okay. Move on to Personnel, five point zero, Leave of Absence Request.
Thank you. I just speak generally, this is a teacher, a non-tenured, first-year teacher at Northeast School. And she had a baby this spring, and she's looking for a year of child-rearing leave for next year. There are extenuating circumstances that surround that leave, so if you wish to hear those, we certainly could go into executive session so I could share those with you. She's been noticed about that, if you wish. Excuse me, but I do recommend that you give the year Leave of Absence to her.
I know it. Okay, Mr. Hall?
I'd like to make the motion that Board approve Stacy Snarons.
Slennar.
There we go, thank you. Request for an unpaid parental child-rearing leave of absence for the 2015-2016 school year.
Mrs. Bush, second. Any questions? Mrs. Aron?
There's no guarantee of position then, she simply?
It would be a guarantee of a position. The school, the grade level would not be guaranteed, correct. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Through unanimous, thank you. And the next item is five point two, Termination of Teacher Contract. Dr. Grumman?
I'm in conversation with the Vernon Education Association. We were discussing the terminations that we had a few weeks ago, that the Board enacted a few weeks ago. And there are actually three positions, I've got to talk as quickly as I can, three positions that are in our unit that require certification, but not specific certification. Those three positions are the gifted talented teacher. That does require a certification for elementary and or middle. And the blended learning teacher at the high school, that requires a secondary certification, but not anything specific. And also our technology integration specialist, that requires an elementary certification, but nothing very specific. So in looking at those three positions, all three are held by non-tenured teachers. And so there were three tenured teachers whose contracts were terminated by the Board. So under the contract, if one of those teachers, any of those teachers could show qualifications for any of those positions, then we would be required to put the tenured teacher in there instead of the non-tenured teacher. And so I notified the teachers, and one of them did exercise a right to provide qualifications, and that has occurred, and so this is a non-tenured teacher, but because the time for non-renewal has gone by, that's May 1st, I would ask that you terminate this contract, and it is due to loss of a position to another teacher. So this is a non-tenured person. Any other persons have been called?
Okay, if anyone, Mr. Hall?
I'd make the motion that the Vernon Board of Education terminate the contract of Rock High School teacher Scott Dixon, effective July 1st, 2015.
Is there a second? Is there a second, Mr. Lynn? Any discussion, questions, comments? I, Mr. Stansel?
So, I'm sorry, one more time. What position is it that's being filled?
Blended learning.
Blended learning. Oh, yes, okay.
With its credit recovery, and we're home over our original credit at this point as well, during summer school and also during the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, please? I just want to say it's, it's a loss, he did a wonderful job in high school. Sorry to lose him. All right, all those in favor?
On the earth.
Yeah, I don't think. Okay, so, anyone opposed? Somebody abstaining? Mrs. Russell abstained, motion carries. All right, now we'll move on to Curriculum. Item six point one, District Improvement Plan. Oh, we're trying to give the Board some more data as quickly as possible here. So in your folders, you have a piece of paper that looks a little bit like this, and you actually have several of them. And the first one would be the district plan. So this is very, very quick. We're trying to do it as consistently as we can, so that you can see the data very quickly. So some of the data we don't have yet, so we're just, we're giving you what we have, and certainly we'll have it by the end of the summer, anything that we don't. Under your first goal, on the district plan, we had the number of homeschool community connections by the liaison and the specialists. This was a new position that the district initiated. I think every organization in town has thanked us profusely for having this position. This is one taken by Laura Corlis, who was a school psychologist at Maple Street School. It says 74, so you have to remember, this would be a family who was burned out of their home, someone who was homeless, someone who had issues with a child, many, many. So even one of these might require eight, 10 days worth of working with the family, working with organizations, et cetera. So she's made 74 that she logged connections, 74 different families that she worked with. Number of interactions between community members and schools, we're still gathering that data. It was all in all kinds of forms, and so we're gathering that now. Mrs. Buchanan has been the queen of social media in the district. She does Twitter and Facebook. We are up to 532 likes on Facebook. We were in the low 200s at the beginning of the year. And we have, some of our hits are in thousands of thousands that we have, depending on what it is. And so that's also taught us what we really need to be keeping out there in the forefront. Some of them is snowding things, but other things, Teacher of the Year, had thousands of hits, so there were a lot of interesting ones. That was under Board Goal number one. Under Board Goal number two, and some of this you'll see in the school reports, which I will briefly highlight. We said that we wanted 80% of grade nine students to successfully complete Algebra I. We were at 74, 75.4, so not quite there, higher than... We were at seventy-four, seventy-five point four, so not quite there, higher than last year, but still not there. If you include the students who received some partial credit, half a credit, or one credit, as opposed to two in Algebra One, I'll explain that when we get to the high school report, it would be over eighty percent. But this is the number who have completed Algebra One, no matter how many credits they received. Ninety percent of students in grade nine successfully completing English nine. Last year, we were at ninety percent, this year, we are not. So, we are looking at that closely, and again, that's in the high school, the high school report. Eighty-two percent of grade three students reading at or above grade level. Again, we were looking for that increase, and we are at seventy-three percent. And we were at seventy-seven percent last year, so I know that I've gone down. Not where we want to be at the end of grade three. The grade K, however, is very interesting. You notice eighty-three percent of kindergarten students will read at or above grade level. That is at seventy-one percent. We had wanted to go from seventy-eight to eighty-three percent, but we also changed the bar this year. So, last year, seventy-eight percent was children reading at or above level C. This year, it is seventy-one percent reading at or above level D, which is much further. It's one level, but it's much higher, much higher bar. In the writing in our plan, I had set out a plan for grades three through twelve and put our numbers based on our baseline last year. It is only the middle school that I'm reporting here, because it was only the middle school who took it upon themselves to create a Writing Rubric, to create Common Assessments in all three grade levels at different points of the year. And so, their data is valid. The data from grades three through five and nine through twelve are not valid at this point. They're just all over the place. And we will be having Columbia University come in next summer for the Writers Workshop, so not this summer, but next summer, for Writers Workshop, and that will allow us to set the bar for grades three, four, and five as well. Grades nine through twelve, Mr. Rocket has indicated that that is an area they are definitely working on this year. We were looking to have two hundred twenty-five students participate in college credit, because we want students to be college and career ready. Last year, it was two oh five, we were moving to two twenty-five, and we ended up at two thirty, so we did achieve that goal. The next is percentage of high school students earning enough credits to move to the next grade level. Now, first of all, none of the summer school, obviously, has been included, because we haven't had summer school yet, and so, those numbers will be revised in the fall. My understanding is Ms. Marinin removed those students who only had community service, so we're only talking actual credits in this, just to give us a clean picture here. We will also have that report from Ms. Marinin in the fall as well. So, in all three areas, we did not meet the goal. We would hope that, we will have met the goal by the time we are in, by the time we're done with summer school in those areas, nine, ten, and eleven. Grade twelve, they do not have the data on grade twelve yet. They know how many people marched, it was two hundred and eight, but they don't have the exact number yet, percent. The other one that we were very concerned about, because we know that not only do we have to have a highly effective teacher, but that teacher, the student must believe that the teacher believes they can do the work, and the teacher really cares for them. And at the middle and high school, we were below on those. My teacher cares for me, and so, we set a goal of seventy-two percent. But last year, it was at sixty-four, so we did go from sixty-four to seventy-one, but not seventy-two, which was the goal. Last year, we were at forty-two percent with Rockville High School, and we've gone to forty-nine, so it's about halfway to the goal of fifty-five. And so, that was, that was just a quick blush at the district indicators of success. Again, there's some holes. Mrs. Russell?
I know we are, oh, you know, we're meeting the goal, but what are you doing to, you know, to encourage? My teacher cares for me at the school. What are you doing with the teachers?
What are you doing to improve my teachers? The teachers, the percentage of my teacher cares for me.
Oh, my teacher cares for me, I'm sorry. Is there a...
It's okay.
Yesterday, so I guess one's working. I apologize. Each school is doing something differently. The high school is doing Love and Logic, they brought some people in, they worked with teachers who were identified as connecting with students, and gave them further tools in their toolbox to ensure that they could connect with students. They were working through advisory. The middle school also has the advisory program. Mr. Harrison, I don't think, Mr. Harrison was working on four other indicators, which he felt fed into this, so he was disappointed that it came there, but he has, and when you look at his report, you'll see he was working on students respecting one another and those kinds of things, and he felt that those indicators fed in. And so, he asked students throughout the year, and then followed up on that. Why don't you think that your, you know, children respect you, other students respecting that kind of thing?
Any other questions, Mrs. Arnold?
Wasn't our goal for grade three to all grade three students, at the end of the year, will be reading above grade level? But that was a...
That's always our goal. Our objective was last year, students in grades K one, two, and three will be reading at or above grade level. The indicator of success was that students at the end of grade three, reading at or above grade level at the end of grade three, will increase from seventy-seven to eighty-two percent, so the incremental. So, the objective is broad and certainly includes all students, because we don't want to pick which ones aren't going to do that. We want everyone to achieve. But looking at the indicators of success, we make them incremental.
And how long have these been our goals?
The indicators of success change every year, and we are looking at changing the objectives, which I'm going to share with you in a second, and my computer broke this afternoon, so it's on my computer screen, and I sent it to the printer multiple times, it's still spinning up there. So, I'm going to tell you what those are.
But how long?
The objectives change. And they, the objectives did not change last year, but the indicators change every year.
Okay, but we've been working on, I mean, the percentage in the indicators changes, but these have been our goals?
Oh, absolutely.
For how long?
The three big board goals have been, since the Board made them in two thousand eleven, January. The three big goals. Build and improve relationships and partnerships with family and community. Increase the achievement of every student through high-quality curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And promote safe environments that are socially, emotionally, and physically conducive to learning. Those are the Board's three things, three goals.
And the second goal, is it fair to say that we're not achieving that?
Oh, I'd say we're moving towards that, absolutely.
We're moving?
Yes, absolutely. So, on that note, before we move on to the schools, the administrators met all day today, and so, they would like to offer a little bit of change in objectives. They're hoping the Board will consider these. Again, I did type them out at four thirty this afternoon, and they're spinning on my computer. So, the objectives last year, last year, we were looking at going with two-way communication with parents and community, and the administrators would like to change that to increase positive ongoing communication between school, parents, and community. They would like to continue on with the objective, develop and implement strategies to further engage parents and community members as partners in education. They think that is still very, very important. And again, I'm not going to act, you to act on this tonight, because you don't have it in front of you, I don't think that's fair. The second one, which is about curriculum instruction and assessment, they have asked to change two of the three goals. The first one was about reading, and that was for our students in K one, two, and three. And now that we have our NWEA assessments that give us a lot more data, we're looking at, looking at cohort data. And so, they would like, instead of saying K one, two, and three, we would like to say students in grades one, three, five, eight, and ten. And that way, there's ownership across the grade levels, all the way through ten at least, to have students reading at or above grade level, now that we have that data. And the second one was about writing, and they, since we do not have a writing program, except through our language arts program, but we'll be doing Writers Workshop a year from now, they would like to ask students in those same grade levels, so one, so that's cohort from K to one, three, so that's grades two and three together, five at the end of elementary, eight and ten, because those are the, we test NWEA from K through ten. They're looking at grade level performance in mathematics, that's an area of great need, as you will see as you look through the school plans. And they would like to keep the two objective, the one objective for Board Goal Number Three, which is ensure that all students are safe and supported and learning at school. Again, I apologize, my computer is, you know. So, I will not ask you to act on those at this point, I don't think that's fair. You would like to go through the, um, the school plans, is that right? So, Rockville High School, you can see that they're progressing, I have the numbers in as well, and these are all listed out. In the district report, for instance, the percentage that was there earlier is not there, was not there in the district report, and both percentages, the one that we started at, the one that we were going to, are in there, in there. But what I would like to highlight is the third one from the bottom, the pass rate for Algebra One. Again, we were looking to go from seventy-three to eighty, we did go to just over seventy-five percent. There were two new courses offered this year. One was Algebra One Every Day, and so, it was a two-credit Algebra One course. Out of the fifteen students in that class, ten of them did earn two credits. Three of them earned one and a half credits, and two of them earned one credit. So, the students all earned some credit towards Algebra One. So, we don't like the numbers, it's ten out of fifteen, that's two-thirds of our students in that class that did not make the full credit. Those were students who were identified in the eighth grade as needing extra assistance in Algebra One. The other course that we added was the Algebra One Plus Algebra Two. So, that was every day, you start with Algebra One in the fall, and at some point in the late fall, you would transition to Algebra Two and have Algebra Two through the year. Those were for students who had failed Algebra One in grade nine or grade ten. There were twenty students in that class, eighteen of the twenty did get Algebra One credit, full Algebra One credit. Sixteen of those students continued on in second semester for Algebra Two. Nine of those got the full Algebra credit, again, we're at approximately two-thirds. Four of them got a half a credit, and three of them did not get any credit, so those three, obviously, were very worried about. But that's something that they have put into place, these two new courses, so you can see this, another safety net. We still do have students that do need support, more support, but this has supplied that support for many of those, many of those students. These are just the high-level indicators, because some of them are not written yet. There it is. Vermont Center Middle School, the fifth one down, increased percentage of students meeting promotional criteria. They wanted to wait and add the summer school when that was all over. You can see the middle school, they did set aggressive goals, and yet, they were able to achieve all of those goals. They had really wanted to far exceed those goals, but they, they were pleased that they got this far. So, you can see the average attendance at events went up by about fifty people at every event, they did count them. They had a five percent increase in parent survey, parents completing the survey, they actually far exceeded five percent. Parents being informed about their child's progress went up considerably. Also, the school helps my child, helps me help my child during at home, went up. Implementation of Common Assessments, they've done. Ten percent decrease in failure in, at risk for failure in math, and the same in reading. The at-risk in math went down by sixteen percent, and as you can see, at-risk for failure in reading went down by fifty-three percent. The writing assessments, they met their goals, but just barely. They really wanted to meet them much higher than that. And these were the four responses. There were six hundred thirty-four student responses, so almost every child in the middle school did respond to the survey, and except for the last item, that's a parent survey. But you can see, they hit the goal in each one, they felt that that would feed into the child feeling cared for at school, so they're very frustrated with that other item there. Center Road School, they, Center Road School, they had a, it was modeled on the One Book One Community Program. They did have a book, it was Humphrey the, do you remember what it was?
Hamster.
It wasn't the hamster, the hamster, thank you, Humphrey the hamster. And one hundred percent of the grades, it was supposed to be just three through five, but all families, each family got a copy of the book, and so, there was a book talk in school, book talks at home. They were quite thrilled with the reach for that. They're still looking for feedback from parents on the activities they had, such as Family Math Night, Literacy Night. They were trying to figure out how to get more information, so they're looking at two types of information. One is feedback from a hundred percent of the events, and the other is the quality of the feedback, what the parents thought about the event itself. You can see that they also were counting their likes on Facebook. And here is an example of the kindergarten not making goal, because they only had sixty-seven percent. In two thousand thirteen, fourteen, sixty-four percent of kindergarteners were reading on level C or greater. In fourteen, fifteen, sixty-seven percent were reading on level D. So, not only did the bar get raised, the percent of students reaching that bar was raised. So, even though it was not the number that they had hoped, I think that was fairly impressive. Again, across the district in grades three, four, and five, we're very concerned about our reading, and you can see our first graders are still holding their own, certainly, and you'll see that across the district in, from their all-day K last year. They've used multiple measures, you can see that here. Discipline data was office referrals, they were looking for a ten percent decrease, and that number does not look right to me. Oh, the goal was to go from a ten percent decrease, and it actually dropped by forty-eight percent, down to one hundred seventy-four, that's why it didn't look right to me. They were disappointed in the next one, which is unchallenged by the work my teacher asked me to do, they actually talked to kids about what challenging work might be, and so, they had an eighty percent, what they really had hoped for more than that, and you can see the others, or sixty-eight percent. The check-in was eighty percent, they checked it in each day. And you can see Lake Street as well, certainly in the academics. About ninety-four percent of parents feel that the school needs the academic needs of the students, even though the goal was seventy-nine, and, let's see what it was last year. It was at sixty-nine percent last year, and so, they were looking at seventy-nine percent this year. Ms. Glensel had very aggressive goals across the board, and you can see she did not meet those, although she approached those. Again, our continuing concerns about grades two and three, and also grade five in reading as well.
It looks like grade four may have beat the ninety percent.
Their goal's eighty-five, and they made ninety.
Yeah, grade four beat, oh, you're right. Thank you. They worked a lot this year on the rigor of the tasks that they had, and so they were using, they were using web's depth of knowledge. So second from the bottom, I will share that with you, bring that to your attention. They used instructional rounds to go into classrooms and then to rate a level of the task. At the beginning of the year, only fifteen percent of the tasks were a level three out of four. At the end of the year, they were hoping for fifty, they got forty-two, so they actually almost tripled what they were doing. Loveland Hill School, just very briefly, teachers are working on their SLOs for writing in this particular school, so they were working on that together, so you can see eighty percent met the goal. In mathematics, we have just finished the new pacing guide, and so while they were at twenty-nine percent by the end of the year, their middle tasks were higher than twenty-nine percent. They don't feel that they got as far as they should've in their mathematics curriculum, and so they're very anxious to use the brand-new pacing guides that were developed under Mr. Testus' guidance. The twenty percent decrease in restraints, in September there were seventeen, in May there were seven, eleven, excuse me. So she's put in tiers of intervention, use of a take-space area as a last resort, so she's very pleased. And we are also very pleased that we have a definite commitment for our very first student from out of district, who will be coming from another town to go to Loveland Hill next year. All the visits have been made, and the student will be attending. In addition, one of our students will be returning to Burn Center Middle School, which is what our hope is for that. Maple Street School, you can see there were some, some wins here, and some not so much. We were hoping for fifty percent of the parents to complete the parent survey, we did not get that far, I want to say it's about forty-two percent, but it was up by a hundred fifty-two So you can see the disappointment, especially in grades four and five in reading, we know that it's going to be quite a, a challenge for them next year, and Mrs., Ms. Trentolo has moved staff around to try to get the strongest teams possible. Again, mathematics, they share an interventionist this year, next year they will have a full-time interventionist, so they're quite pleased with that. Office referrals went down by twenty percent. Northeast School, again, reading certainly has gone up in all schools, but is not where we want it. The, we really are, we really look at eighty-five to be the goal, eighty is an okay goal, but if you look at a continuum, generally you would have fifteen percent of your students that would need additional assistance, ten percent of those, or all fifteen percent of those might be identified, but some of those would be identified under the Individual Disabilities Education Act, Special Education, and, and others may need additional assistance. So about ten percent might need Tier Two assistance, so the assistance of an interventionist in small groups, extra help after school, but additional help from, in addition to their regular learning, and then the other five percent of students might need Tier Three, so truly one-on-one intervention. So our, our goal really, our goal is a hundred percent, but in being realistic, if we can get to eighty-five, we would be very joyous, and then certainly tackling the others, the other fifteen percent with gusto. We have Skinner Road here, and Mrs., Simon has stayed. You can see that Skinner Road specializes in being family-friendly, and they did an incredible number of activities this year, they counted the number of people they had at those activities, students were involved in all of those, they tracked their reading levels, and you can see again, three, four, the upper grades are not as good, their math tasks, not as good in the upper grades, and again, they mentioned the pacing today, the pacing guide, which they will use. And then the process writing, you can see that's only sixty percent, again, there is no cohesive writing program that, that we are using at this point, and so that is being developed. And then referrals, that's a real positive climate over at Skinner Road School. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right off the Loveland Hill, is that right? Does anybody have any questions?
Mrs. Mark. At Lake Street School, I'm, I'm just curious if you have a comment after Conville, ninety-four percent of the parents think that the school meets the academic needs of students, yet, yet the results show that they didn't meet their goal. Where's the disconnect?
I think that the parents are very pleased with Lake Street School, and know, believe that the children are getting a good education. We're measuring for the first time consistently across the district, and so these numbers, while students have done well on master tests, excuse me, in the past, we're now using standards-based curriculum, and so, which is different, and that requires the teachers to, to make a shift. So the scores for Mrs. Wenzel was, excuse me, Ms. Wenzel, was wanting them to be up there, but they're just, they haven't made that switch completely yet. I think that the parents do believe that they're getting a good education. They're not where we want them to be. Any other questions, concerns? Thank you very much. On to item seven point zero, general business, seven point one, food and nutrition services meal price increases for two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Mr. Allen, just a second.
So what you have before you is a proposal to increase the breakfast and lunch prices at the elementary, middle, and high schools going into next year. Federal regulation requires school districts to review the lunch prices each year, to make sure that the, the school lunch program has sufficient funds provided to the program without, excuse me, let's get back there, sufficient funds through the federal reimbursement program to maintain the program. Part of that analysis is to make sure that our paid lunch price for students makes, makes up the gap between the reimbursement we get for free students versus the reimbursement we get for paid students. There's a range there that we use the paid price to make up that difference. So we, each year we perform a review using a price lunch equity tool that's provided to us by the USDA, where that gives us a median price that we are charging within our schools based upon our card price and how many meals served, to see if we're falling within the guidelines set by the USDA for school lunch prices. So after performing that review this year, we did notice a gap that we will need to make up on that price increase, on the prices, which basically, our breakfast price, our median was a, should be at eight dollar thirty-four price per paid student, which for us to achieve that would require a twenty-five cent increase for paid breakfast at the elementary schools and middle school, and a twenty cent increase at the high school. For lunch, the median price that we are currently at, we should be at is two dollars and sixty cents. In order for us to achieve that, we would need a twenty-five cent increase at all grade levels for the paid lunch price. This does not impact reduced lunch price, that price is set by the USDA at forty cents for lunch and thirty cents for breakfast. So based on that review, and then in a comparison, using the district reference group for Group G, which are districts that are in the same economic positions that we are in, you have a good comparison as far as what we're proposing to where we would like to go for next year.
Mr. Stansfield.
I just think it's an interesting contrast, at last board meeting, we improved multiple schools for free lunch, and now we have to raise the price in the other schools that don't get that. And I get that it's something we have to do, but it's not, it's not a good look. I just thought it was interesting.
Mrs. Bush.
I understand there's been a lot of change in the menus in the schools, trying to get them more healthy with whole grains and things like that, is that impacting the prices of the meals that are, have to be brought to the students?
We've done an excellent job of maintaining our cost per meal, based on what our food cost is to the, to the students. We do a good combination of some scratch-cooked items and some pre-prepared items and serve items to achieve that balance, also doing some farm-to-school programs has helped us, you know, kind of elevate the food, but at the same time, maintain a, a price that's manageable for the program. We're going to continue down that road to manage the costs, we, we're maximizing our USDA commodity program for next year with a forecasted increase in beef and turkey prices for next year. We're really looking to maximize those to kind of keep our protein costs down for next year, so we can focus more on using more fresh fruits and vegetables in the program, also to still maintain our current food costs.
Okay, thank you. Now, does this, this program that we were talking about last time, does that impact how our cost is figured? I know several of the schools are going to be involved in that, how, how does that all fit together, as Mr. Stansfield had brought to our attention?
There, there is no connection between the two as far as the price increase in the CEP program for next year. With the CEP, CEP program, with the projected increases that we're going to see in participation, like we saw this year at Maple Street School, that makes up any difference that we would lose in paid student revenue that we would bring in from the program.
So what it boils down to is food costs more?
Food costs more every year, food costs is going to go up next year, you know, our labor expense is going to go up for the contract with the union, so we're, we're working towards maintaining our current nonprofit budget.
All right, thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you.
With the cost of food going up, the lunches and breakfasts going up, do you anticipate that you will be getting applications for reduced lunch, more?
We will, if, we will be very aggressive on our application process next year, especially at the high school, that seems to, that seems to be where our biggest gap is, in getting as many applications as we can back from the schools. And we've kind of trying to figure some ideas of best, best practices that we can use to get the applications out of return. I've been at a conference where we're speaking with other directors about this, and high schools really is the biggest focus going forward, because that is where we see the slow, the lowest return in applications. So we are probably missing a few families in that process, so we definitely want to get more aggressive on that.
Thank you.
Chris, I don't doubt your, your numbers at all, but the information that you provided us about the dirt begs the question about, are we, is it apples and apples, like if a high school can serve a, a middle school can serve a breakfast for a dollar, but we're, the price difference is pretty significant, can you just help me with that?
Not knowing the specifics about what each program is offering, we maintain a very solid cost per meal on the, on the breakfast program. With the recent regulations to what we have to, the changes in what we have to offer, we do offer a significant amount of breakfast items for students to choose from. Not knowing what's happening in the other schools, it's hard for me to draw that comparison as far as what they're putting out. But I think with, with the changes that we've made to the breakfast menu this year as far as our offerings go, we are starting to see even at Lake Street, a nice increase in breakfast participation because of that offering. So I think as far as what did other districts are putting out versus what we're putting out, it's hard for me to give you an answer on that, but I know that we do have probably one of the most comprehensive offerings for breakfast on a daily basis for the students.
And most expensive?
Yeah.
Okay. So the price increase, does that mean that our debt is going to increase significantly as well? The students that don't pay, that difference that we end up with then?
Well, we, we will maintain our no-charge policy at the high school, so that will be some significant, that will have a significant impact there. With the assumption that the other schools get approved for CEP, that leaves Center Road and Lake Street as the other two, the non-CEP schools, those are the two schools that we actually have the least amount of debt, and the highest participation in our online payment system, with my school box through those schools. So I, I don't foresee that being a problem.
Thank you, just if I can clarify through the chair, CEP is Community Eligibility Provision, just to define the acronym, and to Mrs. Bush, to your point, and you might have heard me say this in finance committee meeting, Chris has done a phenomenal job at challenging conventional wisdom and thought on the food menus and the food selections on the menus. Some of them have worked really well, like the smoothie program, some of them have not worked so well, you know, introducing Mac and Trees is the example I always go to, with fresh broccoli and fresh-made macaroni with fresh melted cheese. One would think that would sound delicious and would go over well, the kids are picking out the broccoli, you know, so where we've needed to redirect, the important thing is Chris has looked at that. And there's increased cost with providing fresh food and ingredients, and so we think the kids are worth it, and we want to give them the freshest ingredients possible, but we also want to make sure that we're running a business, and we want to balance that with, with our, our bottom line. So he has changed some of those menu selections that haven't been as successful, and we continue to learn as we move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mrs. Mark.
My move with the Board of Education increased the paid breakfast price by twenty-five cents for elementary, middle school grades, and twenty cents for high school grades, and paying lunch price by twenty-five cents for all grades for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
Is there a second?
Second? I, I have a question on that, it looks to me like, right now, we're charging two seventy-five for lunch, the high school will run up to three. Okay, so twenty cents for breakfast, oh, I see, okay, nevermind. Okay. So, I'm sorry, the second to that? Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor? Mr. Flina, Marshall Carey. Thank you very much.
On to item seven point two, year-to-date budget.
Thank you, through the chair to the board. Item seven point two on the agenda is two-part request, first to provide an update on our year-to-date budget, and request through the board for a motion to transfer any remaining funds from our fiscal year ending two thousand fifteen, current fiscal year, from the board to the town, to have those funds transferred to the capital non-recurring education account. The second item for action, proposed action to the board, is for the disposal of assets at Center Road School. If I may, I'll begin with the If I may, I'll begin with the first motion in order. Pleased to report that we will be ending the year in a very good financial position. At this point in time, we're working to close out our fiscal year. As you would expect, your business office is working diligently to process final requisitions that have been entered within our deadlines that we sent, May fifteenth. We are also closing out purchase orders and encumbrances that have been made, paying some of our expected larger bills to close out the fiscal year, such as our health insurance payments, which we're expecting to pay to the tune of about seventy-five thousand, accrued payroll to the tune of about three hundred thousand, and our final student transportation cost to the tune of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand, to name a few. When I'm looking at the bottom line for this year, and you have also before you in the next agenda item that Mr. Bull had added to tonight's meeting, there's a request to approve budget amendments and transfers. We do have a healthy bottom line, and should you approve all of those budget amendments and transfers, which we will go through in detail in order of the agenda, I'm expecting to get, as far as a number, to give, to provide about seventy to eighty thousand dollars to the capital non-recurring account. So about one-sixth of one percent of our total budget for this year is expecting to be in our fund balance should you approve all of those budget amendments and transfers coming up in the agenda. I could like, if I may, through the chair, just explain some of our major drivers this year to get us to this point in time. First, I'd have to look at our budget monitoring and internal control efforts, not only at Central Office but district-wide. I believe that since we've put in controls that would not allow any budget line item in any school at that level to go negative, it's forced many individuals to take a closer look at their appropriated budget line items. And frankly, a very pleasant outcome has been, I've heard from a lot of teachers directly, from department heads, from building administrators, who are now going out to try to find them for themselves more cost-effective ways to look for purchasing items. And we listened, and we've established some new vendor relationships that have helped us save some money. So I would certainly say we have more cost-conscious culture in our school system. There's been a lot of collaborating with other school districts using consortium contracts with the town on joint bids for health insurance and the copier contract. We have the insurance broker contract coming up next year. And I would have to also mention special education. This year, we've had a decrease in out-of-district tuition while we've seen an increase in special education excess cost reimbursement beyond what we have budgeted. And on top of all that, we've had the highest level of Medicaid reimbursement to date of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and change. And the side note to that is that we're building capacity to weather future financial storms when it comes to special education because two hundred and fifteen thousand of that shall be deposited in an account that we could access should we experience a spike in out-of-district tuition cost. So all that being said, in order of the agenda tonight, you do have a motion that intentionally does not include a number so that when we have that final fund balance, it would go to the capital non-recurring education account.
Mr. Bull.
I'd like to make a motion for the Board of Education to make the request to the Vernon Town Council to transfer any remaining funds from the 2014-2015 budget as of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, to the capital non-recurring education account.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Stansfield?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Now, Mr. Picaro, I'm curious about the special education account that you were mentioning. The only one I was aware we could carry here to here was the capital non-recurring. That was only through the town, so if you could explain that a little bit, please?
Sure. Through the chair. About two years ago, the town council had passed a resolution that would allow us to deposit funds above seventy thousand dollars that we brought in in Medicaid reimbursement into a non-lapsing account that we would have available to us for the sole purpose of offsetting any extraordinary, and that's the actual word that's used in the resolution, any extraordinary expenses that we would incur from first special education. And this was directly related, and this is the capacity building that I referred to, to our experiences a couple of years ago where we had a spike of thirty-five students out of district, which was well beyond what we had budgeted for.
Thank you. Mrs. Bush.
Yes, I'd like to recommend that if we do put funds in the capital non-recurring, we take a look at some of the items that have been put forth through the athletic committee to help out and push along some of those items so that we can get those done. I'd like to strongly encourage that some of that money be earmarked so that we can make sure these things get done.
Mr. Stansfield.
I don't know that I would want to earmark anything. The athletic committee items need to be made part of the five-year capital improvement plan. We've said that several times, and to date, they haven't been. So before, you know, we'd say we wouldn't want to earmark any of that for any specific items. I think it needs to be factored in with the rest of the five-year capital recurrence plan.
Mr. Bull?
I'd echo the same concerns.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to transfer any remaining funds from this year's budget to our capital non-recurring education count. All those in favor? To man this.
Thank you. Through the chair for that. Item two is a request for disposal of assets at Center Road School. It's two-part. First is to trade in banned instruments that are beyond repair to offset the purchase of new instruments. And the second is to dispose of one hundred and seventy-nine student desks that are beyond safe use and repair. The second one's pretty straightforward. The desks are inoperable, they're not safe, and to be disposed of. They've been taking up space for quite some time. We'd like to clean them out. The first one is novel, and I'd like to commend the band director for bringing this option forward through Mr. Burt's office. And that is, she went out and looked at a company where we could potentially trade our banned instruments in for some value and then use them for credit, if you will, to offset the cost of purchasing new banned equipment. We've actually done the same thing in special education for some of our adaptive equipment. And so I wholeheartedly support this request. But it is a disposal of assets if we go down that route.
I'd make motion to Board of Education approve the two attached disposal of asset requests for several schools.
Is there a second, Mr. Stansfield? Mr. Bull?
Question through the chair. For the one hundred and seventy-nine desks, is there any salvage value from those desks? In fact, probably some type of metal or whatnot that may be of some monetary value?
Through the chair. They'd be disposed of through our Department of Public Works, and they have a recycling program where they would, when I say disposed, they would be recycled if there's any value to do that and that would go through the town disposal process. So there may be, and it would come through that route.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that motion? Okay, all those in favor of the disposal of assets at Center Road School? To man this. Okay, Mr. Picaro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item seven point two A is the additional item on the agenda this evening. As I mentioned previously, we are finishing the year in a very good financial position. And before you are six budget transfer and amendment requests. And as you recall, transfer requests do not typically require the board's approval. However, I felt because all of these reflect reprogramming of existing funds to meet critical operational needs and safety needs, I wanted to present them through the chair to the board for approval and action on either if we can do them individually or we can do them all together. But I'd like to walk you through them in order of the packet that I passed out to you this evening. The first one I did sign, but we haven't processed it just yet. It's for maintenance facilities. I felt this one is an urgent one that we do need to fund in some way, shape, or form. It's to cover the costs for repairs of emergency lighting systems at Rockville High School, Northeast School, and Lake Street School, and also to make emergency repairs to our fire alarm system at Skinner Road School. And that's in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. It's a transfer request from several maintenance accounts that you can see there to our fire safety repair line item. The second request before you is to transfer six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars from the special education field trip account that had a balance at the end of the year into our health services, excuse me, health services, other supplies account. If you recall, we were able to negotiate very competitive pricing on our EpiPens, and the state has changed the regulations for EpiPens. So each school location, not just each school, but each school location, according to our nurse, there are fourteen locations that require us to have these there, require two adult and two pediatric EpiPen kits. And so we've got them at a remarkable price of one hundred and twelve dollars and ten cents per unit. And if you do the math, that comes out to, what's shipping handling, to six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And we, on top of that, are pursuing free EpiPen kits where we can, but there are limits on what's available for those who may have experienced that from being on the board before. So that's to purchase EpiPens that were not included in the budget for next year. The next item in your packet is seventy-five hundred dollars from special ed repair instructional equipment line item to Lake Street School. This is to purchase, as you'll see there in the comments section, computer station furniture for Lake Street School. This is to accommodate additional computers that have been purchased for this location. We want to make sure that there's the right desks for students to utilize that equipment. The next item is in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. It's a transfer from several line items, advertising, our contingency account, and computer software to professional and technical services in Central Office. This is to fund the feasibility study with Malone and Midbrowne. And so this would secure the necessary funding, plus the balance that's in the professional and technical services account for a total of about thirty thousand dollars, which is the awarded bid price for that company for the feasibility study. The next one is a transfer request in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from secretary of salaries and of Central Office to professional and technical services. This is to fund the feasibility study to improve the southern upper athletic fields at Rockville High School at the recommendation of the Ad Hoc Athletic Committee. This is how we would fund that proposal, and that is also with Malone and Midbrowne. And then the final one, large budget transfer request is from various line items, substitute teachers, curriculum development, salary, and instructional supplies, and advertising to computer hardware to fund our elementary school wireless network. As you may recall, and this is a conversation that Mr. Burt and I and the superintendent have had over the past few weeks when looking at what our options are. We first looked at our technology grant. If you recall, that grant was not funded as originally planned from the State Department of Education, has been pushed off to September. So there's no guarantee of funding per se or at the levels that we need in our window of opportunity to install the network. Ideally, it would be over the summer. To fund this, we've looked at our substitute teacher account, which we've had a wonderful experience this year. And I would have to say primarily due to the budget monitoring and control from Mr. Burt's office, where we're showing a balance, a projected balance of sixty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents in that account. If you recall, last year at about this time, we were fifty thousand dollars over budget in that line item. And if you look historically in substitute teaching line item, we have been anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars over budget in our actual expenses versus what we budgeted in any given fiscal year. So that's good news. Our curriculum development salary, we have available projected balance of seventeen thousand and change there. Mr. Brown, if you wanted to discuss the sixty-eight thousand in the new instructional supplies?
Through the chair. As you recall, we applied for the original technology grant back in March. As part of that grant, there was a matching funds required from the town. We applied for just over two hundred thousand dollars, and our matching amount would have been approximately sixty thousand dollars. So we held back these funds in this instructional lines for that matching grant. And then, of course, recently we were told that that grant was not properly put forth by the state. And so now these funds are available to us. Again, the intent was with that technology grant back in March was to put wireless into our elementary schools. This is a critical piece of bringing in technology and making the existing technologies that we purchased, iPads, Chromebooks, et cetera, usable to our teachers and our students. Thank you.
And advertising, thank you, Mr. Burt. Advertising, we've seen a major decrease in our budget next year as planned, and certainly we have not utilized the funding in that account for a couple of reasons. Primarily, where we have in the past posted jobs in the newspaper, we are now doing that electronically at a much reduced cost. And all of our bids that we're doing, we do for free, where we get much greater reach and frequency of our competitive bidding through the State Department of Administrative Services portal, saving us the cost of having to put those in newspaper, pay for newspaper advertising. So we've appropriately adjusted the budget next year. In fact, I think we've reduced it to eight thousand total from twenty-five thousand, which was budgeted this year. But for this year, we do have a fund balance there. We'd like to reprogram as well. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions through the chair.
Mr. Stansfield.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2015 budget amendments and transfers as presented by the Director of Business and Finance.
Is there a second? Mr. Colina? Any questions? Mr. Stansfield.
Just wanted to say that I appreciate that we've heard that you have addressed a lot of the items that we sort of had hanging out there and were hoping we were going to be able to address as part of this budget. I do have a question, though, on the curriculum development, the sixty-eight thousand dollars there, the new instructional supplies. I understand why you said you held it back, but I guess my question might relate more even to next year's budget. Why did we have sixty-eight thousand dollars left in that account?
Through the chair. The original budget for this year was a hundred thousand dollars. In the 2015-16 budget, we reduced that by fifty thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars, again, to reflect our practices over the past few years in terms of needs for the textbooks and other instructional materials, as well as part of the overall budget cutting process.
Thank you.
Mrs. Arden. Rather than dividing the question, I'm wondering about the feasibility study in particular that, should we consider that our new superintendent may want some information, some input into what we're doing, what we're requesting? If we approve the twenty-seven thousand dollar transfer through you to Mr. Picaro, how long can that funding sit before it has, before you have to do something with it?
Through the chair. When we enter a requisition, it will encumber the funds, and the timing at the end of the fiscal year only gives us until the end of July to fully utilize the encumbrance. So we have until the end of July to expend those funds. If we don't expend the funds for this purpose, then it would be swept back to the town general fund.
Doesn't buy us much time. I guess I would ask the board how important they think it is for the new superintendent to have input into what we're thinking about doing, what his or her request or input may be to that.
Mr. Colina?
I was thinking that all data is good, in other words, you could bank it, so to speak, and then act on it as appropriately later on. But to have the funds now and then sit on it and then return the funds back to the town would be a disservice to the process. The new superintendent might be able to determine whether they, you know, think it's a good idea to change up the schools, or maybe not. So I think we should move forward and then just see how they interpret the data and work with it.
Okay. Mr. Bull?
I have a similar thought that moving forward with the study as proposed, I believe when we went through the business office to put together the RFP for the proposal, it's a very comprehensive, you know, both horizontally and vertically, and it covers a lot of bases, and it's really a data mining effort. And I think any information that you get out of that type of report, it's going to provide, that's, you know, the new superintendent with a lot of information to make some decisions, as well as board members, town. It was very comprehensive what we're asking.
I just have a comment to finish. That this end-of-the-year report is different than the kinds of reports we would the kinds of reports we received over the last number of years. And I think it's important to acknowledge that, that I appreciate honestly the transparency and the detail that the business office has provided. And I think it's, we should be grateful to the due diligence of the assistant superintendent and special ed, and particularly the business office under Mr. Picaro's leadership, that we ended up in a place like this. And I think it's, in the name of transparency, I'd like to see us finish the year this way, rather than thinking we have to spend down every penny in response to comments from the, from the town side. So I think this is a much better way to do business, and I appreciate that this is the report that we're getting at the end of the year. Thank you.
Mr. Bush.
A lot of the things that I had on my mind have already been covered. I do have one other question. The EpiPens that you're putting in place, they have a life expectancy. So have we made accommodations to make sure that we can replace those when their life has gone?
Through the chair. Yes. In fact, we made it a requirement, well, we will make it a requirement through our relationship with Rockville Pharmacy as one of our main vendors that we're working with in partnership with the town to purchase these, to make sure that we get the full maximum life expectancy that we possibly can. You have to look at the expiration dates because they don't last very long. So when we purchase them, we want them fresh, they're as close to fresh out of the factory as possible, so we can maximize those life expectancies. And you will see this as a recurring item in the budget to replace them.
I also want to reflect Ms. Aron's comments about, thank you very much for your due diligence in making sure that our, our money is well spent, and looking to find places where we can find savings is really important. And making sure that we have, if we do have money that is unspent, that it goes to the capital nonrecurring and constantly refilling that.
Any others have any questions? I do. The $175,000 for the wireless network. In our consent agenda, we approved the application for the technology grant, and in this, Mrs. Philion said that it was going to fund the wireless network. So what's the difference?
Through the chair. There was sort of a catch 22. This was the last evening that we were able to bring forth the grant before it went through for approval on July 17th, before we were able to get to this agenda item at the end to do the budget transfer. Since the grant is not due until July 17th, we were going to rewrite that grant and bring back in some of the desktops that were taken out of the budget, the operating budget, and to update our replacement plan for our desktops throughout the district.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll bring an updated, we'll bring an updated grant at the next board meeting.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion on the floor? Thank you very much. So thank you for all the work throughout the year and everybody's done. Now, item 7.3, of course, we've got a good liaison regarding attendance of organizations and community. Anybody have anything to your head?
I just want to, I'm passing around a letter, I meant to say this earlier, that I received, I think Mary received too, from a parent whose child went on the Bermuda workshop. And we've also gotten several emails, which I think I forwarded to you. Everybody seems very, very excited, or every year, it's a great success. So it's just nice to hear people applaud me. Okay. We'll move on to item 7.4, update on the executive search process.
Mr. Holm.
Okay. I just want to say that we are going to have a special board meeting on Thursday, this Thursday night, June 25th, at 6:00 p.m. And everybody is invited, staff, community members, mayor, council, everybody. We will be appointing the new superintendent that evening. So we'll let you know when it's on Thursday. Item 7.5, nonaffiliated contracts.
Mr. Holm.
I believe you're going to require a motion to go into the executive session to discuss those contracts. We're going to invite Dr. Cullen.
Ms. Philion.
Motion.
32nd. This is Russell. All those in favor?
Thank you, Sandy.
Well, listen to that, the home prize.
Good.